Our proposed budget is for $286,290 in the operating budget. That's about a 1 point percent increase or about $3,000 primarily for contractual obligations for salaries. And we currently have 2.7 full-time equivalents in the department, which is myself, project engineer that's currently vacant, and the administrative secretary. The services we provide are capital project planning services for developments of capital projects for both ourselves and other departments. We provide technical support to other departments on various projects in regards to infrastructure improvements, procurement, that type of thing. We also support the Board of Education at some level in terms of their capital projects. We also review private development projects that come through the land use boards to make sure they're, they're, meet the standards of the zoning commission and also provide reasonable engineering designs that meet all the safety and public safety concerns. There's also many utility projects that come through town in terms of upgrades or expansion of public utility projects. We also manage the GIS services, working with the town assessor and town planning department. We maintain that system and try to maintain the data as current as we can, working with those departments. And we also try to obtain infrastructure grants when they become available through the various federal and state agencies. In terms of project management, which is one of our primary areas of focus, we've been involved with the Henry James Memorial School projects, the Phase III renovations currently underway, particularly with the temporary loss of the building, the Board of Ed building manager. We've kind of stepped in and helped along with Jason and Andy O'Brien to try to keep that project moving and on schedule. Drake Hill Road Bridge and Riverside Road Improvements is a longstanding project we're hoping to get done this year. It's out to bid right now. We've had difficulties getting that moving with the permitting and the desire to raise Riverside Road. We're hopefully finally at a place where we can get that project underway. We've been working on the design for the Terrafill to Bluefield Multi-Use Trail project. We're hoping to get that out to construction this year. We're currently working through the final phases of design and hope to get that approved by the state for advertising in the next few months. Municipal site and safety improvements is the improvements to the town hall campus here to hopefully provide both safety improvements for the pedestrian and for the user of the facility. Includes a parking lot reconstruction, pedestrian crossings across Route 10, lighting, and those types of improvements. Because, so we've been working closely with Public Works, the PD, to get that project kind of to a point where we can put it out and get it, get some, something going this year in terms of construction. The multi-use trail project from Route 10 to Curtis Park is the other segment of that Terrafill connection. We're currently working through designing and permitting on that project. That'd probably be a 21 project at the earliest for construction. Firetown Road Bridge over Bissell Brook and the Barn Door Hills Road Bridge over Bissell Brook are under final design right now, but we are currently waiting for state grant funding, which is going to cover about 50% of those projects. The Simsbury Farm Recreational Compact Site Lighting Project and Fiber Improvements is a longstanding project that was funded maybe three years ago. That's going to replace all the site lighting in the parking areas and the access road to Simsbury Farms. It's also going to bring fiber up to the park facilities, the golf course, golf course building and the main break pool building to improve communication and data transfer for that department. That's going to construction later this year. Tom Tversky had mentioned the Simsbury Farm Evaporative Condenser Replacement Project. That is also going to be done in the off-season this year. In terms of development project support, sorry, did I miss something?
They're not seeing the projector.
Is it plugged in?
Don't know.
Don't know.
Where would that be? Do you know Karen where that would be? It's not here. You luck.
Does that mean we have to, I mean, adjourn?
It's all good.
Is that a requirement? Does that need to be on?
Oh, I don't know.
No, that's for sound. Okay, thanks. She said she's not getting a projector. She didn't say she wasn't hearing.
Usually they're green lights on.
I don't know. Didn't touch it. Our lights are on.
In terms of private development project support, we're supporting the projects underway right now, the Big Y project. We've been coordinating with that in terms of utility connections and what have you. The McLean Independent Living Facility, which is going to begin very shortly, that's 50 units at the McLean facility. Of course, the ridge at Talke Mountain, which is still under construction, Cambridge Crossing up the north end of town, the Highcroft Town Homes Project, which is in its final phase, and the Holcombe Village subdivision off of Climax Road, which is at the 19-lot subdivision. There's also some new applications that are coming forth that we expect to be involved with in the next year. Other department activities, we continue our technical support for the MS4 program, working with the Public Works Department in terms of doing the appropriate sampling and training that needs to be done for that program. Continue to pursue grant opportunities to leverage town funds. We have a grant opportunity coming up that we'll be talking to you about as the board later this month. And we also assisting with the FEMA flood insurance re-study that's being currently done by the federal government. That project's going to start for public consumption over the next couple of months. There'll be a public hearing on that. So we'll be involved working with the public in terms of interpreting the, any changes to the flood elevations. In terms of the budgets, no significant changes. One thing we would like to introduce today is we're looking right now to potentially implement fees for excavation permits in our public right-of-way. We're going, right now, working on a formal proposal that we're going to present to the board sometime this spring. In terms of the excavation permit program, currently there are no fees charged to contractors to do any excavation work, be it utility work, driveway, construction, repairs, in our public right-of-way. So typically, like with the building permit, the fees at some level cover the cost of administering that excavation permit program. And we, again, we are not taking any fees at this current time. There was a staffing levels, because we're such a small department, really doesn't lend itself to us actually covering or overseeing these inspections. There can be as many as 2,000 in any given year. So they're quite extensive and they're very difficult to kind of, to manage because they're so random in terms of their schedules.
Jeff, is this one somebody cuts the roadway, does something to a utility and then paves it?
It is.
Cover it up? So we're left with whatever condition they put the paving in?
That's correct. Our standards are relatively tight, but again, in terms of enforcing the standards, it can be a little difficult at times.
Yeah.
Again, just to respond to the, the actual work being done out in the field. And if it's not done properly, you know, our roadways, it's, it's well-known that the roadways deteriorate at a much higher rate with cuts in them.
Right.
Because undoubtedly they're going to open up and water is going to intrude into those cuts. It's going to accelerate deterioration over time.
Interesting. Interesting, you know, if it goes back to point number one, it's probably a fair bit of the cuts that are being done to improve some level of service, which actually returns a higher margin or revenue to whomever is putting that line in, but it would be technology or whichever. But we're not getting any fee for that permit, so.
Right. The great cost of the actual project per se, it's probably a fairly low cost.
In your estimation, with the age of our water lines in town, is one area where we're going to consider probably see an increase in this area of additional cuts?
Yeah, we've actually seen an acceleration last year in terms of utility work. I think there was over two miles of utility linear, you know, work put in by the utilities, which was a dramatic increase. This year, we're anticipating additional waterline replacement and gas line extensions in town. So yeah, this is a kind of a more important aspect of it.
Yeah.
Because those projects actually have a major impact on the roadways.
Yeah. So it's a great, Jackie just said it's a great improvement, but again, if they're, if you guys hadn't intervened on Firetown and we weren't paving it, we'd be left with a pretty challenging situation for a long time, right?
Right. We, again, we feel that what happened on Firetown is desirable, again, provides, creates more work for Public Works to manage.
Yeah, but eventually, I mean, when, when Firetown was first done, it was not in the state that we wanted it, right? You guys had, you guys got involved and made it better.
I think Firetown is, there's two different stories, and I think what Jeff was talking about is we went into Aquarion and we gave them our list of roadways that we were looking at paving.
Yep.
They let us know that they had interest in replacing that very large water main. We deferred our paving for a year. They did their work, and instead of doing the final restoration, they gave us a check in lieu of that restoration, which because we buy our asphalt at cheaper prices, now we're going to just do one final overlay this summer. And in that sense, it was an ideal project.
Yep.
The frustration was there was some concern about how it was left and the duration that it was left with the depressed trench, which I'd say was not an ideal situation.
What I'm exemplifying is, had you guys not intervened, had they had all that lineup, potentially that's what we could get left with.
Yes.
Is it, is it a subpar product?
And the problem is, you can have a product that even looks good as you leave. The asphalt will look good flush, but if they didn't get proper compaction to the soil...
Right. Yeah, then in a year or two years, it opens up.
Exactly.
Or we have another repeat of what we've got on Lincoln, where we paved that road a year and a half ago, and then Aquarion came in and cut it, and they're going to be making that better. Yeah. So a lot of visual reminders. Folks don't understand the collaboration between your departments and how hard you guys work on this stuff, so.
So the permit fees, again, would allow us some cost recovery on the inspection services. We actually experimented this year with a little inspection on a contractual basis with an engineering firm, and it was, it was helpful. Again, it didn't, it didn't, it won't cover the cost of that, but again, it's a, it's a resource that we're kind of experimenting with, and it's, it's a positive experience.
Good.
We did do a survey of permit costs for other towns, working with our interns here in the town manager's office. We were the only actual town in the greater Hartford area not charging for permits.
Jeez.
So, you know, we're going to take a look, and we're going to kind of look at the mean and the medium cost and make a recommendation on fee structure based on the type of excavation activity. And again, we anticipate the low range of revenue would be about $2,000, and a higher level might be towards the $3,600 range. This doesn't include the long utility work where we may charge on a linear foot basis. We're currently looking at some past practices and some challenges that the utility company may bring to the table if the fees are not reasonable, because we only have the opportunity to really recover the costs of the program based on my prior experience with this type of thing. And that's my presentation for today.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well done, Jeff. Thank you.
I don't understand how much he does.
I do.
The general public doesn't understand.
Appreciate Jeff kind of warming up everybody after, after lunch. It's also nice to get here, not solely focusing on MSW for a change.
Or trees.
Trees. We'll get to trees. We always have trees. So this presentation today is kind of broken up into two parts. We're going to have the first part just focusing on Public Works that's under the operating budget, and then we're going to move into the WPCA, which is under the Public Works umbrella, but because it's its own enterprise fund, we're going to talk about that in terms of financials separately. Generally, if you were to sum up everything up here, we're looking at a 1.67% increase, taking into salaries being the real driver. Taking salaries out of the mix, we are actually decreasing our budget. So it's very impressive. Within administration, it's a very small group, and we had an internal staff person transfer in who came in at a higher step, and that's what accounts for that one change that looked to be jumping out as a higher number. It's also a much smaller denominator with the 290,000, so. Within Public Works, we're just, I'm going to call it 42 employees. 0.35 is a good person that we're looking to actually get on board is our one vacant position right now, which is the weekend custodian. Other than that, we'll be up to full strength for the first time in a long time within the department. Public Works Administration, the crew of three. Really, that's where, that's where everything starts within our division. We've really done a lot in terms of trying to promote customer service. When I first started, I, I just remember a lot of the phone calls were, okay, you need to call this person or you need to call that person. When a call comes into Public Works, we try to run it to the ground. If that means we have to coordinate with another department, we try to do that to make sure that people are not in that circular loop of, oh, that's the police department if it's that kind of animal. Then the police would say, oh, no, Public Works will pick up that dead animal, and we don't want to ever get somebody into that loop. Same thing, there's a lot of things that happen in terms of with open space, which they may think that's Public Works, and we want to make sure, and there's a lot of emails and phone calls between Tom and Orlando and myself, to make sure that we're not leaving people stranded. We've also done a lot with Facebook and Twitter. Carrie Fiverr up in our office runs our Facebook, and I run our Twitter, which is an engineer is a challenge. But it's been helpful. It's been helpful in getting the message out that what we're doing, we're doing for the residents, not to put anybody out where we don't have to. Similar to what Jeff mentioned, we conduct a lot of bids for a lot of different services, whether it's for mowing along Iron Horse Boulevard, or whether it's for the purchasing of gas and diesel, engineering services. We, we purchase HVAC contracts. We do a lot of procurement through our department, and a lot of that procurement actually helps the other departments in town. So we'll, we'll take on that responsibility. Energy is one of the things that we do a lot of focusing on, both electricity, we purchase our electricity every couple of years. By doing that, we end up with more balanced rates. We're not actually at the fluctuations that would be associated with if we were buying our electricity directly from CL and Pay. Same thing, we do annually purchase our gas, diesel, and fuel oil through a large consortium so that we'll get the best pricing on that. We've really put a big focus on ADA compliance in the last couple of years, and we're doing that for two reasons. One, it is absolutely the right thing to do, and the second thing is there's a huge liability if we are not ADA compliant. It's really, it's a risk management service as well as doing the right thing. We do an enormous amount of project management and oversight. A lot of our projects, we tend to actually act as the general contractor, where instead of hiring one contractor who's going to do everything, we hire the individual trades and then we manage that interrelationship because that gets us the best overall price. Nobody seems to know this, but we actually oversee six low-income residential rental units in town. We do that through a contract with Imagineers. They've been great to have on board because a lot of the things that come up is routine in terms of somebody who owns properties, they've dealt with. So if there does have to be any kind of action with a tenant, it's great to have that arms-length separation, but it's just one of these other small services that's done by this department. We do the three household hazardous waste collections. We actually coordinate that for the entire region. Number of years ago, we used to do that with MDC. We found out by working collaboratively with our neighboring towns, we could do it for a lot less money, and we have a lot more control over the operation to provide that service. We represent the town on a number of committees, the CROG Transportation Committee, the CCSWA is the local trash authority that's through CROG, CCM's Policy Committee on Environmental Management and Energy. So we kind of get out there and do our part within the region. Facilities is probably one of the most invisible departments within Public Works. Every time there's a meeting in here, somehow the room gets set up, set up. We never see those guys doing the work. We maintain town hall, the library, Eno Scout Hall, the Veterans Memorial, that little bus shelter on Iron Horse Boulevard. The building is in grounds crew. My guys actually mow Owens Brook Boulevard. We started doing that a couple of years ago. So they leave here and they drive up Owens Brook and they weed whack and they mow, and each year it seems that we go farther and farther up there, and the expectation grows in terms of what people are looking for. There's a lot of these little things you don't think about, like we have to keep up with our elevator certifications, fire alarms, fire extinguishers, the security alarms for the buildings. Every month, every fire extinguisher needs to be inspected. Somebody has to go and make sure that it's up to par. And again, if it doesn't get done, you may not notice, but it's going to put us in violation and put us at a risk. We do a lot of support for social services, Cheese Day, the food closet, I'm sure you've all been there, you've seen how that's grown over the years, and we're bringing that food from different locations. I think it's over 1,000 pounds we're getting just from food share. It's breaking down the tables and the setups. For some of the bigger events, we're really happy to even bring the highway department out there and we help carry the food to people's cars. It's one of the ways that we're trying to get more involved with the community. But basically, the facilities group is in the background of everything that goes on at any of our major town buildings. Highway, everybody, everybody loves the highway department, everybody knows the highway department. So we've got our little map up in the corner, and basically we have 165 miles of town-maintained roadways. Basically, if you were to hop in the car and drive up to Maine, that's 165 miles, and that's what we're maintaining each and every snowstorm. We do not maintain the state roads in town, so if you do see some numbers in terms of the differential, sometimes people ask what the difference is. The state maintains their roadways, we maintain ours, but we do the paving, plowing, guardrails, culverts, street signs, the line stripings, you don't think about it. Somebody has to paint that line, it's a four-inch brush. Catch basins, trees for you, Chris, potholes, of course, the dead animals, illegal dumping and more. Illegal dumping is one of those funny ones, you call the police, the police are great, they're going to tell you, they're going to take care of it. They call my guys and it disappears. And it's, it's just one of the many ways that we work together. Jeff, Jeff talked a little bit about the utility coordination. With all of the tree trimming that's gone on in the last 10 years, we're right there coordinating, making sure that they're following the appropriate procedures, that the wood is picked up. They love to cut trees down and leave the wood in, and we make sure that it gets picked up. We make sure that the trees that are being removed, that are town trees, are posted. It's a legal requirement that they're posted. In case you drive by and see an eight-and-a-half by 11 white piece of paper on there, it basically says this tree is coming down unless you have an issue. We have had cases where people have protested the removals and we hold a tree hearing. One of the things is I serve as tree warden for the town. Chris is loving this. This is tree talk to no end. We actually, and I also have a deputy tree warden who's also gone through the tree warden training. We take care of all of the vehicles other than park and rec vehicles. That includes all of the vehicles that are parked here, all of the town trucks, and probably most importantly, we take care of all of the police cruisers. Every other week, every single police pursuit vehicle comes up to our shop and we give it a full inspection. If you can imagine, they need to know that that vehicle's going to respond appropriately when they're getting up to speeds beyond what most of us should be driving at. And Reed, our mechanic that coordinates that, I think does a pretty good job. He does a lot of his coordination with Fred, and it works out really well. Compliance with state mandates, it, the list just grows. We've talked a lot in the last couple of years about MS4. There's a number of different requirements that keep getting pushed down on us, making our jobs a little bit more difficult, reporting and things like that, and every day I wake up just making sure that we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. They keep kind of moving the bar. We talked about it a little bit earlier with the Parks and Rec, but we did a lot in terms of Greenway and trail improvements over the last two years, something we're happy to do, but it's one more thing that we're kind of adding to the mix of the highway department. The transfer station, you guys are experts. I know you're experts in everything to do with MSW now. We do need to monitor it. It's actually a closed landfill. There's permitting requirements. We work very closely with Jeff Shea on that. There's the Connecticut DEEP. We were talking about new rules and regulations over the last two years. They've put together the Comprehensive Materials Management Strategy, CMMS, and they're asking all of us to be more aggressive in enforcement, public outreach, and they want to see continuous improvement to our recycling programs. One of the things that they're really pushing for is they want to see every community doing textile recycling. We have looked at that at great length. We're looking to see if we can do more of that up at the landfill. It really doesn't work well with us being that we're a subscription service. There are some communities that have moved to it curbside. We've talked both with our, with our two primary haulers, and it's just a very difficult program for them to implement. But we are chasing that down. We're also looking at whether or not we can take food waste up at the transfer station as well. We have in the last couple of years added a lot of the stuff that we take up there for free, including paint. I know everybody thinks that they have to wait until the household hazardous waste. You have that half a gallon of paint sitting in your garage and you hate it, the color, and you're never going to use it. Any Wednesday or Saturday, you bring it up to the landfill, you can dispose of it properly for free. All of the paint that's disposed up there, they actually recycle it. It's a pretty exciting program. Old electronics, you want to get rid of that old, you know, 32-inch black and white TV that's been in your basement for 15 years. You bring it up there, they'll take care of that for free. Old mattresses, one of the things used to happen, a lot of people throughout the state, not in so much here in Simsbury, mattresses would end up on the sides of the road. So we ended up with free mattress recycling. Again, it was a state mandate, you pay for it when you buy your license now, but...
Yeah, free.
Yeah, free. And I guess we kind of covered this twice, but we have our three household hazardous waste collections. Things that we're looking at for 2021 is we are going to be doing the town-wide facilities master plan. This is effectively the same program the Board of Ed is just wrapping up. We are just starting off our process. We're hoping to have a contract within the next month to be executed, and we're hoping that we'll at least have preliminary data on all of our town buildings by next year at this time. It's going to be an enormous undertaking. Different than the school, we have a lot more buildings, potentially smaller buildings, but a lot more buildings. So just the amount of effort of getting the plans and finding all the details and chasing everything down is going to be a lot of work for our department. We're looking at, we, the redevelopment of the Mere facility, the implementation of the sidewalk program. Last year was the first year that the town constructed sidewalks in the last decade. We had two sidewalk projects last year up in the Musket Trail area and then down here in the center. That project actually, because cold weather came in early, is going to be restarting to finish up the center of town in the next couple of weeks, and then we're going to be doing a large sidewalk project this year on Firetown Road. So at the end of this construction season, Firetown Road sidewalks are going to be improved and you're going to have a substantial amount paved, so.
Great.
Lot going on in that neighborhood. We're going to continue our work with the Farmington River Trail and the Greenway. We're still working to make sure we're fully compliant with our MS4 requirements. Sorry, it's got to come up, but tree removals associated with the Emerald Dashboard, this is going to be our third year in working through this program, and I think we'll touch on that a little bit later. And we're going to continue, as we have been for the last decade, with our pavement management work. The nice thing with pavement management work, we've actually transitioned from getting our roadways better to maintaining what we have. So we used to be paving up, up in the range of 15 miles per year, and now we're looking to pave roughly 10 miles per year to keep things right where they're at. In terms of highlights, it's really, there's not a lot here that's very exciting. Most of what we're looking at is contractual requirements associated with step increases and wage increases. And again, really, really small, and if you take out the labor rates, we actually have gone down across the board within our department. So we're providing the same level of service, I think a very high level of service for actually less money in this upcoming budget. We've had some increases in the electricity, and we have had some decreases in some of our facility based upon current anticipated year-end closures. I think we're cutting that one a little close with the $21,000 decrease, but we'll see how the year treats us.
Because I beat the library up, I got to ask you too.
Yep.
Yep. So there's five different numbers in the budget book, depending on which, which department has got electricity. The library was at 16.8, town offices are at 9.8, Eno's at 2.2 on an increase, and then there's two 0% increases in Culture, Parks and Rec. So what is the actual electricity increase?
Okay, there's two different things that impact the electricity. It's the volume of electricity we're purchasing and the cost for the electricity.
Yep.
The cost for the electricity for this coming year, it was projected at a 1.5% increase.
Okay.
This building, over the last year, used more electricity through a number of different factors. One was being the, our biggest driver of air conditioning is air conditioning costs on electricity. The lights, minimal these days, but, but the large air handling units is really where we see our heavy electrical load. I don't, I can't speak to how Parks formulated their numbers. We look at a last three years and we look at a trend. So this building was trending up in terms of its electricity use, and a lot of that has to do with the number of hours that the building is operating and when it's operating.
So based on a three-year experience, it's trending up, so we'll call it 10 minus a point and a half, so it's trending up eight and a half percent?
Yeah. And I, and I think what would probably be helpful is, if you'd like, we could give you a full... And I think what would probably be helpful is if you'd like, we could give you a full accounting of the electricity use.
As much as I don't want it, but yeah, because I asked the question, so, because it's, I mean, that's a, it's a pretty, these numbers are pretty big. And again, I know they're not huge dollar amounts, but this is the kind of scrutiny we'll have to really explain when we get to the next level.
And again, I think it is important to look at it because, you know, we go to the trouble of tracking not just what we spend on our electricity, but how many kilowatt hours we use. The other big thing that's been hitting us in terms of electricity use is our demand charges. And that's something that we've been trying to find a way to reduce our overall demand where we don't have big peaks in our electricity use. But I certainly think it warrants a little bit more investigation.
Yeah, and again, I'm no, you guys are obviously the experts, I mean, Eno is like a sieve, right? And it's actually the lowest increase.
Well, but keep in mind.
Least amount of hours open.
The hours of operation is different at Eno.
And they have night meetings though, too.
What's that?
Eno has night meetings too, so I mean, it's, there's a lot of usage in that building.
Yeah, where Eno, and luckily, most of it's been during the winter months. But we've been seeing a lot more usage of Eno on the weekends during the winter months the last two years. And I agree 100%, it's a cost, you know. When the buildings are in use, we have set temperatures and when the buildings are unoccupied, the temperature varies 10 degrees off of that. So in the winter, they get 10 degrees colder on the weekend at Eno. And in the summer, they would get 10 degrees warmer before any systems would turn on.
But the 7K for the increased air conditioning, right, for this building, is proportional to the, to the library for the, so it doesn't seem out of line.
How is it proportional, Wendy?
Well, the library was 10K, which is open a lot more, a lot longer. They had a $10,000 increase due to air conditioning.
The library opened a lot longer.
Than this office?
It's not a lot longer.
She said 64, 64 hours a week.
Weekends.
This building has nights, I mean.
But not in the summer.
Yeah, meetings are in here all the time.
I thought we talked about that before, that this building is not open as much as a library.
Again, I don't, I don't know what the exact numbers are.
Sorry, I just wanted to say it didn't seem crazy.
Although air conditioning is the primary driver of our electricity, it's not the only. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. And again, without, I'm not sure how exactly the library formulated their cost, I didn't, I wasn't involved in that. But I can certainly look at that and we can look and break it down into whether it's from demand charges.
My point is missed here, though, I'm not looking to over scrutinize, what I'm looking at is the library needs $10,000 more money for something else. If that really is the number, fine, leave it, but if we can give them that 10 grand for materials, I'd rather give them that 10 grand for materials. I'm not looking to take away money from the library.
No, and I think.
I'm looking to give them more for what they really need.
The question is, can we, can we put eyes on that number? And if that number maybe really could, instead of being 10, maybe it can be eight.
Yeah, or is this a trend that we got to live with, which means we're going to see this every year and we need to start expecting it. Because, again, we've been going the other way on electricity for most of the years that I've been on this board, so it's surprising to see these increases.
And it's, believe it or not, even the upcoming year, although we have locked in rates, we might want to look at recapitalizing our rates because there are some significant changes right now globally in the cost of natural gas because of the impact on oil.
Absolutely.
Right now, and the oil markets are crashing, so the natural gas is going to reduce their price.
And again, to be very clear, I would not.
Natural gas drives the electrical rates.
If there was 10,000 in savings or 5,000 for the library, I would not reallocate that somewhere else, I'd give it to them for materials, which is a critical need. So I'm not looking to take away from anybody's budget here.
No, and I agree 100%, and, you know, we also, we do have at least some happy news on electricity. Both the skating rink and the DPW facility are up and operational with our solar arrays and we did that. That was zero out of cost for the town, it was a power purchase agreement. So up at the rink, they're looking at about a $35,000, $37,000 a year savings with that system. And at DCW, we're looking at about $11,000 between the two buildings up there.
Standing, wow.
So, and the streetlights that I know were mentioned earlier, were well over $100,000 a year savings. And even better than that, we're now managing any streetlight repairs or replacements ourselves. And I think we've been able to provide a much higher level of customer service because, I know, Sean, you know, we've had people in here before talk about streetlights, we haven't had that since we've owned.
We have, no, you guys have done a great job and that was a beautiful example of spending some money to save money in the long term. That was, that was well done.
All right. So the new sidewalk program, we're going to be at about 1.2 miles, it's going to predominantly be on Fire Town Road this year. We're going to pick up some of the work that wasn't done at the end of last year. And if there's any money remaining in that original allocation, there's a few small side streets where we might also pick up those sidewalks. It's going to include 19 of the ramps that are now going to be fully ADA accessible. The other thing to keep in mind is we talk about increased workload and increased pressure. Any sidewalk ramp that we paved by, we must also bring up to current ADA standards. So these are, again, these things change and all of a sudden, the cost even for paving a road or the workload involved in paving a road becomes more complicated. We need to get a second vendor in to do all of the sidewalk ramps that lead into it. The other thing that we found out, we're doing in-house design for the sidewalk project and we're also managing that in-house. Last year, we ended up using, Jeff mentioned the consultant inspector, we actually used a consultant inspector on that project. And I think it was about $16,000 for two, two and a half months of that inspection, just we didn't have the capacity within our team to do that. And it's very invasive within the neighborhood. Everybody wants to know exactly what's going on in front of their house, they want to know, is it going to be asphalt across the front? Is it going to be a new sidewalk or a new driveway? What's going to happen to my bushes? And we want to make sure that we're right in there and working with the neighbors so they understand what's coming and work with them the best we can. It's their neighborhood at the end of the project, so. And the other thing, just the townwide facility master plan is just going to be a significant tool next year was we do our capital planning. I know you heard a lot this morning from both Kristen and Lisa about the new programs they're offering and we're excited about that. But continuing to increase the programs at both library and Eno is taxing our custodial staff. Just the addition of the tariff bill room and the fact everybody wants to be in the tariff bill room now. We're doing turnarounds where we have an hour between two different groups. So we need to have custodians ready to clean the room, change the setup, put in more tables, take out tables, put in chairs, and essentially be standing at the ready to accommodate that. And when we're talking about a department of six, that's a real challenge, especially two of them work at night. So it's really been a challenge to keep up with that. And the same thing with the programs at Eno, the food has just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. It used to be just about in the rotunda, now it's the auditorium and it's been great to see what we've been able to offer. But it's been really putting pressure on the facilities department. I think we've beat the new state mandates to death. And the other thing is we're running out of capacity to take on new initiatives. We constantly have members of different groups within town, whether it's sustainability, whether it's the Clean Energy Task Force, the Recycling Committee, Tourism Committee. Everybody wants us to take on new projects and programs and they're always great. And the worst part about my job is saying no, but we are just, we are really out of capacity to take on anything more. We added the Sustainable CT initiative last year and they did a great job and we were able to help them out and they did most of it on their own, but it still takes resources. We staff what has turned out to be a monthly meeting for Sustainable CT and that takes our project administrator, we have to pay him for that meeting. So, you know, we're continuing to see pressures in terms of providing that level of service. I told you, we'd be, we'd be back. We have various drainage improvements, this has been kind of an ongoing, every two years, we've been putting money in. It's too bad Art House left because one of these projects was right outside of his house a couple of years back when we did East Wheaton Street. Would be a great example of how we use this 125,000. The only reason our roads perform well is because of drainage. If you don't get the water off the road, you're going to have hydroplating issues in terms of an immediate need and then you're going to have water getting into the base, freestyle. You're not going to get the money back that you invested in the asphalt. So the first step is always going to be to make sure the drainage is good. We're looking at a couple of cross culverts and other things that need to be replaced, that's where these larger funds would come from. And some of the work will be done by town staff. Two years ago, we did a big project up in the Heights in Terrifield using our own staff. Other times, like on East Wheaton Street, we contracted out to a local contractor just due to the size and scale of the work. Our little pet bug there is our Emerald Ash Borer. We've actually been doing fantastic with the number of ash trees that we've been able to remove and very few problems, all things considered. We've removed over 300 ash trees from our roadside. We have about 100 more to go and hopefully, this next tranche of money is going to get us there. We're actually trending way ahead of the initial estimates in terms of how many trees we can remove for the cost. Originally, we were looking at three tranches of, I think, 76,000 and we've been doing 36.5 additional per year.
So again, I picked on fourth Tom earlier, do we need to combine that with the work in the parks? Because we've only been presenting the roadside story and not the entire town story.
Well, and it's always funny when I'm up here because so much of what we do is interchangeable and I, you know, again, there's some different staff and I, you know, why that wasn't brought up, I don't know. You know, the ash problem has been quite a blight on the town. The ash trees are terribly dangerous because when they die, this is a, I can pause it for one second. This is actually a picture of a tree stump from an ash tree that was adjacent to a very busy roadway. This was a tree that the homeowner, we worked with for three years, originally, they wanted to save it, they wanted to have it injected. We worked with them, we continued to work with them, we gave them, you know, contact information for people who had the right technology to invest. Finally, it got to the point that it was too late to do the injection, they had not taken a proactive approach, the tree was dead. And we fought with them for about six months about, listen, we have to cut it down, there's just no two ways about it. We ended up with Bob D. involved and finally, I think the final, final week, I just said, you know, even to Bob D., I said, it's got to come down. I don't feel good about this. And so when it was cut down, this is the stump that was left and the arborist that did the work decided to walk over and check it out. Kind of pride in the big day's work.
That's how rotted it, yeah.
Yep, that's how rotted it was.
Down he goes.
It's waiting till the next guy goes in.
It's funny to us now, but that could have very easily been across a car or across somebody's kid or otherwise, yeah.
And you know me, I'll joke where it's appropriate, but this was not, this was a very, very busy road, where this was. Where you were probably seeing 4,000 cars a day that were going right next to it.
It's pretty huge, isn't it? Yeah, I know exactly which tree it is. So to that end, we've got the same exposure in our parks and on our trails. And is there an opportunity here in this budget season to get together quickly and combine this package? Because again, I don't want to slow your work down, but.
I think we'd be somewhat differential right now. What we've been doing and it certainly would add on, we get rid of our trees in two ways. We have certain days where we hire our local contractor that goes out and they take care of everything. Most of the time, like this time of year, what we do is we have a separate rate where they supply an arborist and a bucket truck because that's the dangerous and hard part. We do all of the traffic control and then make the wood disappear in our very large chipper. And that is the most effective way for us to do it. It's, they literally, it's $800 a day, which.
$800 bucks a day?
$800 bucks a day.
For your costs or?
No, 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 $800 bucks a day for a contractor to come in with a bucket truck.
And take out how many trees, as many as they can do?
As many as they can do, we're paying straight hourly rate and it is funny because we get more.
$2,000 a tree of a tiny car, no matter what it is, six inches or six feet wide, ah, $2,000.
Maybe it's you, maybe it's you.
Again, I'm not trying to gum things up, but it's just, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of trees bolt on the roadway.
No, I think, actually, we're using the same vendor right now. And the only difference would be is a lot of time, the trees that they have aren't necessarily right next to the roadway.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
And that's, so it's a little bit of a different animal, but, you know, and, you know, again, we communicate regularly, we do trainings together, whatever we can do, we, you know.
Can, I don't know if this is, can, can the three of you guys get together before we go to the Board of Finance with, again, it doesn't have to be fully baked, but is it back to 70? Is it 100 to incorporate what these guys were talking about before?
Doing more in the C N R.
Not to take away from yours, we're going to still fund it, but looking at it holistically.
It would be interesting if we could get our vendor in because we started by doing a tree inventory, which again, is so much easier along the roadside.
Yes.
We have our 165 miles, takes three days to drive it if you ever feel like doing that. And they gave us an inventory of all 400 trees. And that's how we, you know, so they were identified, we had a manageable task, we understood what we had in front of us and we've been working our way through that. I don't know exactly how they would do it when you start talking about trees off of the roadway and how many hiking trails we're going to have to do. And I think the other challenge you have is it's a different, it's a different risk parameter. In other words, along the roadway, the whole tree warden thing is, do you have a target? In most of the case, along the roadway, you have a target, you have a potential risk. If a tree, for example, is leaning back in towards Orlando's open space, even though it may be a town tree, leaning back in towards nothingness, it has no target. We don't worry about it. You have to identify at what point within open space do you say, okay, this tree is safe versus this is a trail, like clearly, the Greenway Trail. Huge target, a lot of people. But now when you get in, up into Onion Mountain, I don't know.
Yeah, but, I mean, maybe I'm overplaying it, but you can also walk through there with a chainsaw and cut down 10 trees in the time it takes you to cut one roadway tree.
Exactly.
Because there's no, you're not stopping traffic, there's generally not going to be people around, it's easier to manage those trees.
And we generally, and I think you guys have moved in the same direction, we almost never free fall a tree. We cut it down from the top. Yeah, and again, it's controlled, it's safer. And I was going to say, when we're doing that, what I think is one of our more effective days where we pay the arborist to be there, we get more complaints on those days than any other. Because all of the staff that's there to take care of the wood, once it's down, has to be in the clear zone, which is away from where the work is doing.
Standing around.
So three of them will be standing there, not getting killed.
Because you can't get, you don't want the tree to fall on them.
That is your job right now, stand away and don't get killed. Okay, bucket truck operator says, I'm good, he comes down, they go in there, they make the wood disappear, but.
Gotcha.
Somebody drives by.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Again, not looking to muck things up, but we've, we've got two tied, tied together problems here. One, obviously from a risk factor, I get why yours is the highest priority, but we can't.
No, no.
We can't neglect what's going on on the other side, these guys have spoken loud and clear that we got to help them out too.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think, like I said, it was interesting to me for years that this wasn't getting brought up. I didn't know perhaps along the golf course, we didn't have ash trees, I thought it was a little odd.
I mean, it's not just the ash trees too, I mean, there were a lot of storms the last decade that have caused a lot of damage to the trees that is now coming to bear.
100%.
Yeah, because these are not the only trees we're cutting down.
Yeah, there's oaks, there's pines, I mean, there's a lot of these trees.
Right, this is a special supplement to what we've already been doing in our budget. And, yeah, exactly, we had the storms, the drought, the drought really impacted trees that's taken a couple of years to kind of, you know.
I'm with you.
Yeah, well, we had a drought followed by excessively wet season, I mean, it.
That's bad because then the roots give.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I've spoken enough about trees.
Chris wanted to talk more about trees.
Okay, then Lorax?
I'm cutting them down.
I speak for the trees. Eno, we put this in last year as the first half, this would be the second half of getting up to the clock tower area. There's some wood rot up there, it's exposed to the elements 365 days a year. It is wood, it's unfortunately not the best material, but it's historic and we want to make sure we get up there and do the right thing. The whole cost of this project is getting up there with scaffolding and everything else, so. We were talking earlier about the facilities department, to the left is the utility van. It's a 2007 beautiful Ford Eco Line van. This is where they keep all of their tools for all of us who've done home improvement projects, nothing's worse than when you need a 90 degree plumbing elbow and you don't have it and you end up running back to the hardware store. They have everything they need in the van. The van is well past its useful life, we actually deferred this one last year just because we felt comfortable with the van. Certainly is the right time to get rid of it.
Just redo the hand me down and give it to Tom and he puts another 100,000 on it?
Well, one of the things interesting when we, when we talk about fleet is you don't want too many old vehicles, just the same way very few of us are driving very old vehicles because you end up paying, even though you say, oh, you know, we got it for nothing. And within fleet management, it's called fleet creep and all of a sudden, everybody says, you know, I'll keep this one. And you have too many vehicles and they all end up, the little this and that's cost you a small fortune. I think Wendy should probably talk about this slide.
And you didn't put my picture up there.
I know, I know. It was dark, but it was a good picture.
A good picture.
Each and every year, we replace one of our large plow trucks, $180,000. It's a 46,000 pound, 10 wheel drive dump truck that's used all year round, it's not just used for snow removal. It's sized and built for snow removal, but it's what we use for our construction. By doing this, we get back into the fleet management philosophy the same as our roads. Every year we buy one new truck, we keep our fleet, the oldest truck is 13 years. These are our critical vehicles and it's the same way we treat our police car is different than I do our facilities van. These vehicles are frontline vehicles that have to work. And during a storm, certain things break, but if one vehicle goes down, the operation keeps going. If all of a sudden we lose two or three vehicles, especially during a heavy storm, we start losing the ability within the town for the police to respond, the fire department to respond and the ambulance to respond. So these vehicles are kept at a higher level of service than within my division, within the facilities or the W P C I. So that the highway department always will have frontline vehicles that are treated different. Not to say that we don't have some old trucks, we have some vehicles from the early seven, or early 80s and even in the 1970s that we still use. Use them for our barricade truck, I think it's 1976, I think it was a Freihoffers bread truck and then it had a life as a dive van. But what it's there for, it's loaded up with barricades, when we need barricades for a tree falling in the middle of the night, everything's in there. everything's in there. It does not go out in storms. If it was to break down, nobody's gonna get hurt. Boy, more exciting stuff. 11-foot snow plows, that's the size of the plows on our, on our bigger trucks. We're looking at $20,000 out of Town Aid Road to buy two new plows. We're also looking at $51,000 to replace one of our crew leader trucks. These are the very large pickup trucks with the sander and the 10-foot plow on them. We have any given, we have three crew leaders. The crew leader trucks are rotated out on a seven-year cycle. They will usually work their way back down into the fleet, or if the market is right for a trade-in, we'll do that. But again, the crew leader vehicles are the same ones that, we like to have our big trucks focus on their routes. And during a snowstorm, if there's an emergency, there's a medical call, there's an accident, the crew leaders divert and go over there because they're faster. And they clear the road. They will plow driveways to get ambulances in. It happens. And, and again, these are the ones that need to work all the time. The other thing we have in here, coming out of Town Aid Road, is a 10-wheel heavy dump truck with a wing plow. It's a mouthful, I know. Again, our regular trucks are 46 or 47,000 pound trucks. This would be a much larger 10-wheel drive, or I'm sorry, 10-wheel dump truck, not quite as big as one of the ones you would see operating for Simscroft. This would be one that we would primarily be using for our construction during the summer. Our trucks are about half the volume of what you would typically see, like for Simscroft, a triaxle truck, or what you would see when we're paving, the trucks that come in that are coming from the outside. And this is replacing, probably my favorite truck, we actually have one of our large plow trucks, only one, is four-wheel drive. But it has become unreliable. We've been using it sparingly for about the last five years, but it, it's just not worth having around anymore. And the wing plow is that secondary plow that hangs off the side, which we use when we have a real winter, to push back the snow banks.
Is it, is this one an all-wheel drive?
No.
Or no? You don't need that, that's.
We, it, it, the problem is.
The half of those is enough.
It's the weight, and the problem is the all-wheel drive. It was great to have for certain things. It had some unique abilities. Like during a heavy winter storm, our big trucks get stuck once in a while. And it would, that was a truck with the four-wheel drive that could go and get them out. Instead, what we would do is use the front-end loaders to go and get them out. The other thing that we found is with the four-wheel drive on a truck of that size, it was just too much power, and, and the axles would break, things would break. It was just, it was a.
So, what's the, just give the comparison, just curious. That's 258. When your regular green and orange is how much?
180.
180.
Yep.
Is this, so we didn't, we bought a wing plow a couple of years ago. This is?
We, we have two wing plows in the fleet. So, this would be the second wing plow.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
This would be, the other wing plow is on a standard weight truck, and it's performing. But this is gonna serve two things. It's gonna have the extra heft for the wing, and it's also gonna be used for our construction, which is gonna.
Yeah, no, appreciate, I just, I remember that we had done something with a wing plow a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And it's funny, because interesting, you know, a couple of years ago, we'd actually, I had actually investigated, could we go with a few smaller trucks, again, within the fleet? And that was the year we had the 36 inches of snow in one storm.
Yeah.
And I decided it was probably not worth it.
Tom, just real quick. So, just wanna point out one change. We are proposing something slightly different from my budget that was released. We swapped out the, the lift replacement for the mechanics with the crew leader truck. The lift replacement was proposed to be $54,000 out of Town Aid Road in year one with the crew leader truck at 51 in year two. Upon looking at it a little bit more, we thought it would be best to swap those with year one and year two. Again, both of those proposed projects were Town Aid Road. This would be $4,000 less than the lift. So, it's basically a cost neutral, coming from the same revenue source, but we just swapped those two projects for year one and two.
And, and on my end, not, getting, getting out of our cycle with the crew leader trucks is just really setting us up for failure. It, it would, it would just be a, it would put the fleet back, and we would be really putting ourselves at risk. We talked a little bit about pavement management. Basically, if we pave 10 miles of road a year, each overlay on, on average lasts about 17 years. That means every 17 years, we get to resurface every road. So, I, we know it's expensive, and I think this kinda ties back into what Jeff had mentioned earlier, when utility contractors come and cut our roads, we've put a tremendous investment into them, and it's an absolute shame if we don't protect that investment. Similarly, we've done a lot in terms of improving Public Works, in terms of our public image and our public perception. When somebody sees a utility contractor working on the road and they do a poor job, or they leave it in an unsightly condition, as far as they're concerned, it was my guys. They don't know the difference. And we took a lot of phone calls last summer, and, and, you know, my opinion is, for that every person that called to express their concerns, there's five, six, 10 others that didn't. So, I can't stress enough that we really need to look at having an inspector for the town. Most towns of our size have a construction inspector, whether it's a seasonal position or a full-time position. It's, it's, it's just putting us at a huge disadvantage, not having somebody to keep an eye on that, that type of work.
Town Aid Road's what the governor just released, right? Weren't they holding that hostage?
Was it released?
Uh, not yet.
Not really.
We're expecting it. We're expecting it.
He said he was gonna uncuff it as part of the budget process, right? So, we haven't even gotten this year's Town Aid Road yet.
But that changed like twice, and it mattered like four weeks. So, originally, the package was supposed to go last week or this week, and then we were supposed to get the funding, I think, within the next week or two. Well, now they wanna do it as one entire bond package. Now it's being delayed.
Till after.
And we could probably get the funding, like, a couple of months out.
And that's for the current fisculator.
Right.
And, and this is the one, I know we've, we've talked about it for years, you know, we, we really have, over the years, curtailed our spending out of that, and we let it build up a little bit.
Yeah.
Last year, we used a big chunk of it to support the roadway paving, but it's always been the concern that at some point, it's gonna stop, or at some point, it's gonna be drastically reduced.
Right.
And just as you mentioned, we have to pay for all of these things. If these things weren't paid out of Town Aid Road, it would, there goes CNR, there goes, it would have a huge impact.
Yeah, again, not, not suggesting we do anything different, but just a good FYI for everybody that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways this stuff gets paid for.
Just, just wrapping up real quick, up, up at Public Works, the last phase of all of our facility improvements up there is resurfacing that entire facility. That would also benefit the Board of Ed. We have, they have, their custodial staff works out of